Order, the Indian Trail Planning Board, June 19th meeting. I'd like to recognize a couple of special guests. Mike Head, one of our town council members. And Gary, our new economic development director back there. And I understand that... Have you all got an update on Shirley Howell's husband? I understand he had a stroke this morning after the surgery, so I hope everybody keep him in their prayers. I'd like to start by roll call and start back down here with Ms. Mimi. If you'd say your name, present.
Yes. Cheryl Mimi, present.
Jordan Oblin.
John Kilman.
Joe Litt.
Dennis Gay.
Art Spurk.
And do we... We don't have any alternates here tonight, do we?
Yes, we're good.
All right. Was Joe here? Oh, Joe. Oh, I'm sorry that hadn't announced the name. I'm sorry. Okay. Are there any, in addition to changes to the minutes?
None from staff.
Okay. Okay. Request, is there a motion to approve the minutes in a second?
I make the motion to approve the minutes of May 15th.
I'll second that.
Okay. Minutes are so approved. All in favor? It is unanimous. Okay. Our first item is number four, which would be ZM 2018. Would everybody like me turn their cell phones down? ZM 208 0038, and that is Sergio, is it Dykes, Deeks, whatever? Okay. Sergio.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. We'd like the staff to present the agenda.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is a zoning map amendment. The applicant is Sergi. The request is to rezone eight parcels, which collectively total approximately 1.944 acres in size. The properties are currently zoned, single-family, low-density residential, and the request is to rezone to light industrial. The intent is to locate a construction business with a building and parking lot. The nature of the business would be dispatching, I believe, local hauling, and there would be some truck parking for approximately eight to 10 trucks, as well as some necessary repairs of those trucks from time to time. The next step, should this application be approved by town council, the applicant would need to request a special use permit from the Board of Adjustment if they are seeking to store... If they are seeking the use of vehicle storage and towing. For an overview, since this is a zoning map amendment, you need to think about all the potential uses in the light industrial district, and some of those uses include building maintenance services, commercial greenhouse or nursery, construction, sales and service, motor vehicle repair shop, which does include commercial vehicles, and also residential storage warehouse. Here's a photo of the property, one of the properties. This is taken from Indian Trail Fairview Road, looking directly at the property. It's not able to easily get to the other properties due to the nature of the lots. So for a vicinity map, you can see... My cursor working, yep. So here's Indian Trail Fairview Road, and here is Yance Road, and over here is Old Hickory Business Park. Here's the zoning map. Anything in light yellow represents a single-family, low-density residential, which again is what the property... All properties in this request are currently zoned. They are highlighted in red. They're outlined in red here, and they're located in the circle. This purple parcel, which is currently zoned, light industrial, is not part of the application. But you can see, again, the request is to change these lots, so this cluster of six lots, as well as these two lots, to light industrial, which would be also to this purple. And then, again, there's purple across the road here. When we look at the future land use map from the comprehensive plan, we can see that this is located in the Old Hickory Corridor. This is located in the... What the future land use map calls the employment center. So that is where these parcels fall. Again, you can see Yance Road here, and then Fairview Indian Trail Road. And you can see also in behind here, it does show for the existing single-family lots to remain kind of a medium-density residential. As part of the requirement, we did hold a public meeting. It was on May 29th. It was held here at Town Hall, and there were seven members of the public in attendance. Some of the questions included what's the nature of the business, the logistics of truck movement into and out of the property. There was some support for the development, and there was also opposition to light industrial district. The request is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Again, when you look at the future land use map, which I showed in the previous slide, in terms of infrastructure and also economic development. So I do want to point out, for those of you who may not be familiar with this area, you can see roads on the maps here. So you see all these roads laid out, but that's not actual... That's not actually how the area is. It's not actually plotted. So where you see some of these roads listed here, it's, like I say, it's not paved. They may be gravel roads in some situations, or there just may be... May simply be trees there. This is a unique area, and I know the water and sewer service has been a... Has been an issue here. So I'd... Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that's part of what has delayed this from developing out over the years. And the applicant is certainly aware of that interesting nature. So at this time, I'm going to read the findings into the record. The proposed UDO amendment is consistent with the following goals of the comprehensive plan. By infrastructure goal number one, development in this underdeveloped area would result in an expansion of the public street system into an area where they have not yet been constructed. This would help spur future development of the area that has largely remained undeveloped within the town limits. Economic development goal number one, rezoning these parcels to a light industrial classification will provide additional opportunities for business development, which will help further balance the Indian Trail tax base. This rezoning request is reasonable and is in the public interest because it promotes the goals of the Indian Trail Comprehensive Plan in the areas of land... Whoops. In the areas of infrastructure and economic development. It is consistent with the adopted plans within the town of Indian Trail. So at this time, I'd like to see if you all have any questions of staff, or we also have the applicant here who can answer any questions for you. And...
I'd like to also interject, but if you hadn't already signed up for public comments.
Yes, sir.
Crystal over here in the gray blouse has forms to fill up for... Fill out for public comment if you would like to say something in favor of or against, or just any type of comment about it. See Crystal, and she'll put you on the list.
The question I have, number one, is how long ago was this designated zoning? Was that before they were annexed into the town of Indian Trail, where the zoning was shown like it is now?
We can't speak to what the zoning was whenever the property was originally annexed, nor do we, at this point, know when that property was annexed into the town of Indian Trail. I suspect it's been in the corporate limits for an extended period of time.
Another question is, where is there the availability of water and sewer to those?
According to Public Works, water is located along Indian Trail Road as well as Yance Road, and it's accessible to those properties. There is no water located along Wood Lawn Drive, and it's not accessible to the lots in the back. Back it up here for you. So again, it would be accessible here along Indian Trail Fairview Road and then Yance Road here, but not along Wood Lawn. And there is no sewer access to any of the properties. But the applicant is aware, has been in touch with the county for water and sewer.
The land won't perk though, will it? That seems to be the reason why it wasn't developed.
Yes, sir. It will perk. It will perk.
It does perk.
It does perk? Okay, so you could put... Okay.
Any other questions coming?
The... I'm sorry.
Where is the nearest fire hydrant?
I don't know. At the time, when we have more information, that's when we send this out to the fire marshal. They don't have anything to comment on at this point until we have some...
Yeah, I mean, since water and sewer is an issue. And that was also my question. The availability of installing a fire hydrant, you know, at some point, will it be close enough to the property?
So with the water access being off Fairview Indian Trail Road and Yance, that does make the connection available in the future when he would look to develop.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Spurk.
One of the other questions I have is, you're talking about maintenance of diesel trucks. That's an environmental concern that I have. If they're doing any kind of maintenance, number one, let's say they're changing the oil, they need to have a place to dispose of that. But it's not just that. It's diesel trucks, even being parked, have a tendency of leaking. And so I have an environmental concern about that property, how that's going to be handled. The other concern is the noise abatement.
Is it what?
Noise.
Okay.
If you have diesel trucks around in and out of there, and eventually, since this is mostly a single-family, and let's say it does get developed, that's going to create a problem. So how do... How are they doing with the noise? How are they doing with the environmental concerns?
Well, at the time of site plan review, the applicant would submit all that information to us. And environmental, I mean, they... That's why we are just one stop along the road. They also have to reach out, like I say, to Union County. So once, like I say, once there's a plan in place, they run that kind of business plan by them to make sure that those steps are in place at that time. Because right now, it's just speculative. And then also for noise, and we do have a noise ordinance, which is something that you find more in the municipal ordinances rather than the county. So I mean, there will be some traffic noise, but you know, I don't think we regulate a lot with...
One good question. How many adult employees are you going to have on that facility that will be able to support a family?
If we could just give the applicant a chance to make maybe a...
Presentation.
Say a few words about variety of...
Any other questions?
Um, would it be okay if he speaks for himself?
Yes, please.
Hopefully answer some questions.
Yeah. Just want to explain to everybody before he gets up and gives his presentation that we are... We are the... Just the planning board, and so in that respect, we are just a recommending group. So any final decisions are through the town council. And we're strictly a sounding board, and then we make recommendations to the town council. So if you'd like to step up, the applicant, give us a presentation, and open... And we'll open up for questions from the group up here, and then we'll have the public comments from the audience.
Hello, everybody. My name is Sergi, and thank you very much for coming out. And as far as the business, it's... We have about 10, from nine to 10 trucks right now. So totally, how many people is supporting? It's supporting about 14 families. So, and that's... I have... We have like a transportation and a construction business. So construction business, we're planning to park like a bopki out there also, something like that, trailers for the construction. So it's going to be even more family-supported. As far as the water, it's... I believe it's running like a 12-inch water pipe right on the property, right in the front of the property. So as far as the fire issue, it should be plenty of water if, hopefully, nothing happens, but just in case, yeah. And as far as the noise, also, the question is, as far as the noise, the truck's going to be... It's an over-the-road transportation company, and it's not a terminal. So there is not going to be like a coming in, unloading, reloading, and all that stuff. So it's just coming in, park, shut down the engine, and that's it. So, and there is going to be... I don't think it's going to be much noise. It's probably you're going to hear more noise coming from the Yance Road, and driving cars from it, just then parks, trucks parked there. What else? It's... I don't know. Any questions?
So can you just explain? So you said you're not a loading company. That means you're just parking your trucks. Like what exactly do you do? You go out? Your business is basically out from that location?
Yes.
You're just a station... That place that you're requesting, sorry, that you're requesting is just more for stationary purposes?
Yes, yes. So it's not like a facility, like you see like them on the... In Charlotte, where the truck terminals, when they bring all the freight in and exchanging the freights and all that stuff, and it's working 24-hour, 24/7. So it's more like a... Because we're a small company, so, and we're going to the companies and pick up their freight at their facilities and deliver to their facilities, and just coming back and park the trucks, and so something like that. So it's not like we're bringing the freight and reloading, unloading, reloading. They might be happening like once in a while, reloading from trailer to trailer, but most of it's just right now for the storage. Later, like you've seen the phase two, the goal is to build, put like a dispatch office right now. Because right now, we're renting the property in Waxahaw. So, and we want to be at one spot and everything.
So what you would do is you would take... You'd pick up a load in, say in Charlotte, and you'd drive it to Chicago, and your truck would wait until your dispatcher had another load, and it may go to Texas, and he'll wait and pick up another load, and then come back to Charlotte.
Yeah, yeah.
Gotcha.
What is the extent of the repairs that you would be doing on the trucks?
Well, it's probably fixing the tire, make sure the maintenance stuff. So it's not going to be like a big repairs things right and going on, because I mean, you have to have good facility to repair those engines. And so, and right now, with all the regulations, DOT regulations, I don't think there's going to be much environmental issues, because it's... They pretty pick you on it.
Now, the other question is, I know that you live in Waxahaw, and you're moving the company from Waxahaw to Indian Trail, and I think that's a good idea. But are the families willing to move too?
Well, don't know. Don't know. Maybe in future. Never know. Never know. Yes.
Will you also have space if a driver has been driving too long and they need somewhere to stop and rest?
All our drivers are local drivers. So I mean, they probably not going to want to sit there when the home is around three miles away or five miles away. So, yes.
You had mentioned phase one and phase two. So is phase one just the lot for storage and parking, and then phase two is the building?
Yes.
Okay. And then, so phase one is the design like a gravel lot, or is it paved?
It's a gravel lot.
Okay.
Because we're going to bring also the construction, like transportation. But in the later phase two, I wanted to jump from... Skip the phase one, but financial things, it's not that easy. So, and eventually, we're going to want to build like a nice warehouse there. So I mean, the offices, so we can have the people there, dispatchers there, and everybody who can run the business be there.
And then another question, as far as like a perimeter fence, is there any type of discussion or idea around the fencing or screening that you might put up?
Well, we're going to have to put the screening, and I believe there is... Indian Trail has some kind of rules as far as the fencing and all that stuff, and we're definitely going to follow that rules. Yeah, we're going to secure the premises for sure, but we'll do it the right way.
What size side truck? Are they the small trucks or the big?
It's the big trucks.
The big trucks?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I would like to just add that this is a zoning map amendment. It's not a conditional zoning map amendment, so there are no guarantees with this application. You know, like I say, are you comfortable with the light industrial district in... On these properties, knowing that, again, this is not solidified? The little concept rendering that you have before you was not designed to anything in our UDO. But you know, when someone does submit a site plan application, then they absolutely do have to meet the requirements for parking, screening, and buffer requirements. Did want to remind you of that.
So what you have circled here is that basically the two acres, right?
Yes, sir.
And then I see there's some highlights in red?
Yes, it's the... I kind of provided the circle to help you zoom in a little bit. But yes, sir. So it's the six lots in the back there that run up to Paula Lane. And I use the term Paula Lane loosely, because again, it's not improved. And then the two up at the corner in between the purple lot and the blue lot.
So at this point, all the access will be off of Yance Road? Is that correct?
Yes.
Entrance, exit, that sort of thing? Any other questions?
Is it going to be tight over there or no? Because the thing is, because that's where Walmart is, and you have that school. You know, the school, now they widen up the road.
Well, it is... It is pretty far from Walmart. It's in behind Chick-fil-A, which Chick-fil-A, that area can certainly be hopping, especially around lunchtime, because traffic can definitely queue back pretty far on Indian Trail Fairview Road. But it's far enough from Walmart. But I mean, and that's another thing, you know? When he does look to do improvements, he's going to have to run that by engineering and make sure that's up to the proper right-of-way and the proper improvement for that.
And there's a school there, too?
Yes, ma'am. A bit further down, yes.
Okay, so this place is away from the school?
Metroline.
Okay. How does the... I guess my question would be, I mean, I know that you said you had two people that declined. I mean, that objected. That came to the meeting, it was two residents that objected, and two was for it. I guess my question would be, because I know there's a horse, you know, boarding area over there right across from... So I'm not sure who the residents were. I know there were a few residents. There are a few residents' homes over there. I guess the thing is... I guess my concern was, what were the... What were the concerns of the ones who objected?
We kind of had two different ends of the spectrum. I had... We had a couple, and we may hear more from them at the public comment phase, but we had one couple who said, great, we are happy to see, you know, we're happy to see some development and improvement in this area. And we had another couple who said they want to see that area stay residential. It's been residential for as long as they've been in the area, and they have some residential tenants who live there, and so they envision this area staying residential. And there was also some concern, I believe, with the noise as well.
I was just curious, as far as how is the traffic flow now? Do you... Are you familiar with the school, the schools there? Down Yance Road? I'm just curious about the traffic flow.
Well, I think the traffic, yeah, the traffic flow has certainly increased with the school, and I think that's symbolic. I mean, you can see it in physical form with the addition of the new traffic signal that was added at Indian Trail and Yance Road. And so certainly, but I think overall, I mean, if you go on to, you know, the Yance Road corridor, it's not a... But I would... I mean, it's not a neighborhood street by any means, but it is not a... It's not Old Monroe Road. And so I don't have counts off the top of my head that I can share with you at the moment, but it seems like it's well-managed. It is structured in a way to manage the traffic that currently exists.
And it will be... It will be fine for a business that will have a huge truck going through? It will... You think that street will support a large vehicle going through?
Well, that'll be part of the site design process in terms of making sure that the radiuses to the site driveway are established or of a size to allow a truck to enter the site, and that the driveway is sufficiently separated from Indian Trail Fairview to make sure there's not any backups or anything like that created. But I mean, you do raise a good overall, you know, issue, which is, and is actually with one phrase you used earlier, is it tight in this area? I think that was your... And you were looking more at the overall region, but I would say just kind of highlighting something Ms. C. said, which was, you know, the plan that you... The sketch that you have that was shared with you by Sergi's was not designed to our ordinances. And so when you apply the UDO standards, like for example, the buffers that are applied against residential properties, and there's a paving requirement, and fencing and whatnot, when you apply these various standards, you know, the site, the usable area of the site is going to get constricted. And so that's something the applicant will just have to work through in the site plan process to see what's truly buildable on this property when you apply the buffering and right-of-way improvement requirements to it. So I think that's... From that aspect, things will get tightened up on the site, and whether or not all these activities can occur on that property is we'll see when the engineer puts together a plan in accordance with our standards.
Thank you. Thank you.
Are the parcels now currently undeveloped? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. With respect to the three remaining parcels, I know it's kind of tough for us to sit here and maybe guess what's coming next, but my concern is that by rezoning most of these parcels, where does that leave the other three as far as future development goes? Because they're... If they're not coming in as light industrial, then, you know, what does that become? So I just wanted to at least point that out and say that's a bit concerning, but at the same time, it's tough to... It's tough to guess, so I just think we need to consider that.
Absolutely. And that's something ideally in a planner's world, we'd like to see those pieces connect as well. I believe, did you try to reach out?
I did.
Okay. And he at least attempted to try to acquire those properties as well, but you're absolutely right. We would rather see them be contiguous. It is something to think about.
Any other questions? Okay. At this time, do we have a list of folks that would like to get up and give us their comments? I'd like for you to ask, you'd make... Keep your comments to three minutes. And we're all friends and neighbors, so let's all be nice and polite to one another. We'll start on the comments. Michael Falkenberry. If you will, please state, of course, your name and address is on file, but if you are, when you come up, state your name and address.
Good evening, Michael Falkenberry, 519 Pigott Circle. First, I want to extend my deepest prayers for Ms. Howell and her husband at this time. Sorry to hear that. I have 20 years' trucking experience dispatching, and I drove years ago, so I pretty much know what this operation's all about. Do have a few concerns. One, will there be future expansion? And if so, will there be a limit as to what that expansion will be? How many trucks will be allowed on that lot? Also, will hazardous materials be transported on these trailers? If they're going to be dropped on the lot, that's another safety concern. If they're going to have a head start to do their dispatch the next morning, they can have the trailers preloaded, I mean, ready to hook up and go. Also, has a berm been proposed for the perimeter of this and put the fence on top of it? That would alleviate some of the noise, also the headlights from flashing around. Also, I'm glad you brought up the fact about the horse farm, because there's a sharp curve right there. A tractor-trailer cannot negotiate that safely. No offense to the drivers, but me driving an SUV, I've had cars come in on my side of the lane in that curve. And also a concern I think his drivers will have too. If they're going to try to cheat, to try to get a head start instead of going to Indian Trail Fairview Road, they'll make a left, go towards Indian Trail and Unionville Road to get the expressway the other section. That's a concern I have. Also, will this be a 24-hour operation? I mean, I know they're dropping and hooking trailers throughout the night, but will the mission become more detailed? Meaning, when it expands, will it be a full-fledged trucking terminal? Not cross-dock operation, but dropping and hooking all throughout the night? More noise and more safety concerns. Also, it says right here, there will not be a high-traffic area where trucks are coming in and out. Not now. It will in the future. If this becomes a commercial corridor, it's going to open up the gates. And with the expressway opening up, with the other tractor-trailers coming and going, it will increase the traffic. So again, I hope if this is approved, I hope he's respectful of the neighbors. And like you said, we are good neighbors here. And let's see if it can work out. But just consider these questions I have. Thank you.
Okay. Henry Crow, which I'm assuming you're an attorney for, is it Audrey?
Blackwood, Audrey Blackwood.
Blackwood, okay.
I want to thank you for listening to me. I was driving up here from Monroe, and I noticed the temperature on my car went from 95 to 100. I don't know if that's a good sign or a bad sign. But when I parked out in the lot, it was right on 100 degrees. Among the papers in your packet is this aerial photograph. And I would invite all of you to take a look at it. And you can really see fairly clearly the impacted area by this, the areas can be impacted by the placement of this truck terminal. It's all in green right now. And within that green foliage, under that green foliage, are places where people live, single-family residents. My client, Audrey Blackwood, owns several of those as rental properties. She owns rental property along Woodlawn Lane, and also on Paula Drive, right across from where this terminal will be situated. As the report from the planning department states, six parcels, which are the subject of the application, and which do not front Indian Trail Fairview Road, extending to an area that is now developed with single-family homes. To give you more of a perspective where this is, quarter mile further, farther down the road on Yance Road is Union Academy Indian Trail. I mean, it's just a walk from where Paula Drive, which apparently is going to provide the access into this property, intersects with Yance Road. And to give you a further perspective of where this property is, as you turn off 74, you pass Indian Trail Baptist Church and Metroline Christian Academy. So within this area where he's going to put this truck terminal and house tractor trailers, which at the community meeting he indicated would be 48 to 53 feet in length, you have two active popular school systems. So I'm sure you will take that into account in determining whether this application should be approved. Paula Lane and Woodlawn Lane are narrow roads. I don't think you can really call them two-lane, two-lanes wide. And Woodlawn Lane, at least in parts, is a gravel road. The planning department states that the proposed zoning amendment would result in an expansion of the street system into an area where they have not yet been constructed. It is unclear how this will come about. The planning department says that rezoning to L1 will provide additional opportunities for business development. It is unclear how this will occur unless there's a-
We need to wrap it up quickly here, so.
Unless there's additional rezoning applications are approved, which was alluded to by a previous speaker. So what you're being asked to do really is spot zone. And in order to spot zone, you have to have a reason, a good reason to do it that's clearly articulated. I don't think, with all due respect to the planning department, that they presented you clear, cogent reasons for doing this spot zoning right now.
We're not out of time, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Avery Norrisk. Hope I didn't butcher that one too bad.
Oh, that's pretty good. I am Avery Norrisk. I live at 2507 Yance Road, which is almost baseball throw from this property. Apparently, no one's done a traffic study on Yance Road since Walmart was opened and since this charter school opened. I've called DOT on multiple occasions because of potholes made by the dump trucks when they built the school. Nothing's done. The road is not in good shape. If you had someone do a traffic study, we probably get 20 to 30 semis a day on that road coming up from Walmart and heading to that business park. Traffic congestion in the morning for that school, it's a charter school, there are no buses. Traffic congestion with everybody taking their kids to school in the morning and picking them up in the afternoon around 3 o'clock, I can't even get out of my driveway now. Now you want to add more semis. I'm against it. The lots do not have any access to any of the roads at the present time. Paula Lane does not go through. Woodlawn does not go through. Right now, it's a shame to even think of putting this in. His lots do not connect, as was mentioned. I don't know where he's planning on going with that. I wish him luck, but thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll close public comments. And we'll ask for board recommendations.
I have one more question, it just came to mind. On Unionville Indian Trail Road where it hits 74, is it going to be one of those intersections where you can only turn to the right, and you have to make that U-turn?
Yes, that is one of the DOT's super-street projects at 74 and Unionville Indian Trail Road.
That in itself seems to be a problem for semis.
I will, I will just, just add that the, the turnarounds that are being designed on 74 are being designed for truck, you know, truck turnarounds. Because, I mean, 74 is a re, I mean, it's a regional road that, you know, provides service from Wilmington up to, you know, the mountains and beyond.
Oh, sure. I, I understand that. And I'll tell you what I observed this morning. I came out, and there was a semi in front of me. And when he made that U-turn, he was all the way into the area where to turn around. The back two tra, back two tires of his trailer ran over the median to get around that U-turn. I observed that also, where the tire marks on other locations on the street have done the same thing. So I am concerned about that being part of this.
So I guess, at this point, it's still have to do a question. They still have to do traffic studies, and so some of the questions that have been proposed tonight by the folks about the width of the road and potholes and that sort of thing is going to be addressed at some point?
I'm not aware, we're not aware at this point if the, if the project will generate a TIA. That will be evaluated once the full scope of the project is determined. Again, as we talked about, you know, the, the standards in the UDO will, I think, constrict a lot of the activity when you take into account buffers against residential properties and things like that, and road improvement requirements. I think the footprint's going to get smaller and smaller. And but once we have a scope of work, or more detailed scope of work, then the engineering department can determine if the TIA's going to be warranted or not. But they would be handled at that stage, at the site plan stage.
Right. More questions?
I have a question. So relative to traffic, you know, recognizing you were mentioning that you're, you're long-haul, over-the-road trucking, so for the most part, your trucks, best case, are out on the road. So how many, how many trips, ins and outs, would you anticipate on, say, a daily basis?
If you'd like to step back up to this podium.
Well, being over the road, usually the trucks on the roads are from seven to 14 days. So, and being a small, like, trucking company like, like we are, you're going to see probably trucks, like, four trucks, three trucks, a week. That's it. So it's not going to be like, like they mentioned, like, it's not a terminal. It's not like you're coming in, like, one truck is bringing the freight, another truck is picking up. And it's not like this. The truck's going to come in, like, maybe three, four trucks, going to, four trucks going to come in, and the rest of the trucks going to be on the road. So, and we are not hazmat certified, so there is going to be no hazmat on the properties, so. And it's not going to be busy as far as the road being wide enough. I'm a truck driver, too. I've been on the road since I was 18. So, and the Yance Road is a pretty wide road. And if it's need to be, like, because the intersection, Paula and Yance Road, that's a, that's a pretty big intersection. And the semi truck can't turn, even 53-footers. It has enough room, because it's built to DOT, North Carolina DOT standards. They have to accommodate those trucks.
Does the staff know how wide that road is? Is it 16, 18 feet wide, side to side?
Yeah, I don't know how far back the, the widening improvements, when they did the signal, how far back those went. I mean, it's, it's a conventional, you know, old NC DOT road. I'm guessing somewhere around 12 or 13-foot travel lanes. But again, I'm not familiar with when they, when they put the signal in there. I think they added some extra asphalt, and I just don't know how wide that was and how far back it went.
Yeah, not that far back.
Any other questions?
I do have one last. So, so the, the light industrial that's adjacent to this, and like, in the front, is that vacant now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so no, no businesses are there?
That's not vacant.
The purple lot has a building.
That is not vacant.
That's that brick building, right?
That's that building on the corner of Yance Road. It is not vacant. There is a martial arts studio that's going to-
Correct. And that is the one that is zoned purple.
Yes.
Yes, sir. The, that that is zoned yellow is vacant.
Okay. And purple is light industrial? So it is zoned light industrial?
The purple with the martial arts building that is currently in existence, that is light industrial.
Gotcha.
And that's the one that's within the circle?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I mean, I know it's just a draw. And then the one that's, that's next to it, though, that's light industrial, but there's no building or anything there, right? This, the lower.
That's a U-Haul rental place.
Yes, sir. That's right.
And other, and other concerns in that building.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I was going to make a quick comment. That widening is not that long into Yance. It's closer, it doesn't even take it that far to the school. The widening is probably near where his business would be. And maybe a little, just a little ha, pass. But it's not that wi, it's not, it's wide, but it's not that long on to.
No, I agree, I agree with that.
Yeah. Okay, because I'm like, all right, that's my comment, sorry.
Okay. All the questions?
I think we had one more.
It is my understanding you said that there would be no traffic study done?
We do not know at this time. There's not enough information on this application. Once we get more, they prepare a scope of work, and that goes to our engineering department.
Yeah.
But that's not done at this phase.
Yeah, because it seems like some of the studies that we, that I would personally would need to make a decision, we don't have at this time.
And that's why this isn't just a zoning map amendment? So it's not a conditional rezoning like some of the others you have seen? Yes, ma'am?
One of the things, you know, I'd love to see a, a business in there. And I commend you on what you're doing. But for us right now, I think there is so many questions that need to be answered before we can make a real good decision. That we propose, we recommend that we postpone this until we have more information.
Can I, can I ask you a question, Mr. Spur? So, so, and to clarify, the purpose of tonight's meeting is not, is just the, the amendment? So. Because we wouldn't, we wouldn't have a, the need for, I mean, a traffic study utilities for that phase, because we're so premature. So this is just to consider pending a successful, oh, sounds like maybe some of the questions that you're asking. Am I, am I right in saying that?
That's, would you mind?
No, of course.
You're, you're correct, Mr. Kilman. So again, the item that's before the planning board tonight is a zoning map amendment, where we are, the applicant is requesting to go from one district, single-family residential, to light industrial. And so what you, well, you know, the applicant has been very, you know, very transparent in terms of his intent of how he wishes, why he wants the rezoning, and how he envisions using the property. The statements that he's making tonight, you know, regarding that are not binding. They, the property could be rezoned, and they could sell it to another, he or she could sell it to another user, and they could build anything that, you know, has been on Ms. C.'s list there that you see on that slide, or that is otherwise allowed in the, in the UDO. And so that's the big picture that you're evaluating tonight, is light industrial, regardless of the transportation business that Sergi has outlined for you tonight, is, is light industrial and appropriate district based on the town's plans and the, you know, the character and, and surrounding environment of that area. In terms of asking for more information, I can certainly, you know, appreciate that request. But again, the applicant is responsible for meeting the, if the property is rezoned, the applicant is responsible for developing a plan that meets the UDO standards. And so in terms of asking for, you know, a traffic study to be prepared, or to look, be looked at, or, you know, other inform, other, you know, kind of future development-type information, that's, that's not really the, the, that's not really appropriate for this type of application. You know, there's certainly, if we were in what, you know, in the conditional rezoning process, that's where the applicant prepares a plan, maybe prepares a traffic study if it's warranted, maybe even shares you, with you building information, here's what my buildings will look like. You can certainly, that's where you can dive into those operational-type details and, and, you know, show, you know, I'd like to see more landscaping on the eastern side, or I'm concerned about the storage area for the vehicles being there. Can it, can it be relocated over here? You know, those kinds of things, you can get in, into the, you can ferret out those details. But again, this is just, is light industrial and appropriate zoning district on this property, given our long-range plans and just the, the, the character of the area and the surrounding environment? And I think Ms. Mina, Mina had a follow-up question.
I guess, I guess, I guess, I'm, thank you so much for clarifying that. So I guess that, so the thing we need to focus on, basically, is just trying to get it to be rezoned. Is that's all we need to do tonight?
If you believe that it's appropriate for this area.
If I believe, okay.
Now, will this come back to the planning board again? Or it would just go through the, the planning department, and then it would go on to town council?
The site plan would just be approved by staff.
By staff, okay.
Unless a special use permit is warranted. And if he chooses to go that route, that goes to the board of adjustment for the use. Again, that's not drilling down into the nitty, nitty-gritty again.
I got you.
That would be the board of adjustment.
I still have a problem with this. And the reason I have a problem with it is because I've listened to the neighbors and the people around this area. If we recommend to rezone this as light industrial, we're setting a precedence that I don't think that we have the amount of information to make it good for the community. I, I just, I just can't, in good conscience, even though it is just a zoning request, a zoning request is very important. If it's single-family right now, and I've got families saying, hey, we want to keep it single-family, that live right next door, and we don't have a positive idea of what is going to happen on that property if we vote to recommend it to be rezoned, I just, in good conscience, can't feel comfortable with that unless I have more information. I understand what, what you're saying, this is only a zoning request. But if we make the recommendation to go ahead and change that zoning, we're setting a precedence. And the next one will come along, and the next one will come along. And I don't feel comfortable with that, personally.
I would like to add that that's why the town puts together the future land use map and the comprehensive plan. You know, when this was put together several years ago, the vision for this area is looking at employment center. You know, is this something that you, do you believe that this is still in keeping with the area? Do you think that, do you think that transitioning this property and possibly some others around it to light industrial will help to achieve that goal? Do we still think that that's relevant? You know, I'm, I'm sure staff, we will be updating, we will be looking to revisit the comprehensive plan in the next few years. But for the time being, that is the guiding document that the community did provide feedback on, which shows it as employment, or what that's worth.
I, I believe in that, too. You know, the comprehensive plan is great. It's a piece of paper, and it's a document. But I've got people that live there. And that's my concern. When I have gentlemen and people that come up to the podium and say, hey, look, I live here. The comprehensive plan doesn't really make any difference to them. And it's just a document. So I'm concerned about the people that live in Indian Trail. That's all I have to say.
You could suggest that the applicant try to request the conditional rezoning- You could suggest that the applicant try to request the conditional rezoning route? That would be, that would just start the process over again if that is something that you believe would be necessary for this area?
Can we, can we request, I'm sorry, did I, did I cut you off? Can we request that he looks for another location? 'Cause I just feel like this, this location is not...
He does own these properties, so I imagine that's heavily made on this decision.
Right, because my concern is that regardless of it is light industrial or not, I really don't, I really do not think that that's a, that is a place for, to even consider rezoning it, because it's not, I understand employment. I truly, truly support employment for the town of Indian Trail. I personally do not think that alongside of the gentleman that just spoke, I personally don't think that I could feel comfortable because I, I know that area. Even when they put the school up, I was objected to that. That area cannot support the, the traffic. The problem that we have here in Indian Trail is that we, we build, 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 but we don't think about the traffic. And we don't create, there's no other, there's nothing else to create, escape from traffic. There's no other side roads, there's no other, everything is, everyone continues to get bottlenecked. So even when you build new things, there's not another, there's never another road or another passageway to get through so that you are not sitting in a traffic. So I'm concerned about, can this particular area support the, the changes that we want to make in the town? I personally, this is my personal, I understand the codes and, and things like that. But I personally do not think that this particular spot is still, it should just be kept to where it is, is residential. I personally don't think the spot can handle any type of major business because of what is already there.
If I could just add just a couple of thoughts and, and certainly, you know, Ms. Mina, you and the board members, I mean, it's, it's the planning board recommendation that's being forwarded to council. It's not the staff recommendation. And so I, I respect your, everyone's opinions and, and I know you'll make the best decision. I would just add, in terms of the transportation, I think just, just a couple of things to bring to light. One, and I appreciate Mr. Sade accepting and saying that in light of the size of this property and what, you know, he's heard so far in terms of the scope, a traffic study is unlikely to be required for this project, even if, when it goes to the site plan process. But in terms of the, kind of the, the, you know, road infrastructure, you know, we build, we build, we build, but we don't, you know, grow our infrastructure to support that. And that's kind of what I'm hearing you say. I, I would just kind of, you know, just add to that, that discussion that, you know, we do have the Monroe Expressway that is gonna daylight in November, end of November of this year. It's gonna be the Thanksgiving Day miracle, you know, for, for this region. And, and that's gonna, you know, that's a multi-billion dollar, I believe it's in the billions, investment in transportation infrastructure that's gonna directly benefit, you know, this property here and all the properties on Indian Trail Fairview, because there'll be an interchange just east of it that'll help provide folks with easy access to, if they're heading to Wilmington or if they're heading to, to Uptown and, and beyond. And, you know, also, you know, Mr. Spur brought up the 74 improvements that are going on. And, you know, while those are predominantly, you know, kind of, they're, they're primarily safety improvements, they're also intended to help with the flow of traffic on 74 and, and to help minimize those traffic signals so cars can go north to south or as efficiently as possible. Again, we've got the improvements that are gonna be coming up on Indian Trail Road in, in a couple of years. I don't think you've heard about the, the Main Street, kind of the complete street project that's coming up. You've also got the widening of Old Monroe that's gonna start in 2021. The extension of Chestnut Parkway, probably soon there, you know, around that same, that same time period. So, yeah, I would, I would argue in some respects that, that, you know, Indian Trail is kind of in, in this kind of transportation renaissance that, you know, we've never been in this position before. And, and no, it's, with the exception of the Expressway, you know, in 74, it's not, you know, some of those aren't happening today, but they're, they are happening soon. It's not, not that, it's not that our, our children will enjoy them someday, you know, they're, they are happening. And I would just, again, just reinforce that, you know, the Expressway is opening up in just a couple of months and it's, it's gonna, it would directly serve this property as well as the, the other properties near this rezoning site.
One thing I want to just mention, listen to all the comments, is that a healthy town is a well-rounded town. And so it not only needs residential, it needs commercial, it needs retail, and it's light industrial. One thing about this property, and I'm guessing, but what is it, about two miles away from 74? Would you say that's about a two-mile drive, max? Yeah, and you've got Old Hickory right across the street that's got deliveries in and out of there all day, which, they're much busier than what this will be, because these are long-haul trucking. And so I don't think, me personally being in, you know, I've been in industry my, my whole career, so I understand what they call LTL shipments, which come in and make milk runs all different places. This is not that type of business. This is a, a long haul and they drive 10 hours and they stop on the side of the road now because of all the requirements on CDL licenses. And they keep these trucks out on the roads going constantly. So what I know of the business, it's, it's gonna have a very small impact on the traffic over there. So it's whether you want to continue to be a bedroom community and, you know, everything else go to Charlotte and surrounding areas, or if you want to build a, a business base, which, you know, rounds the town out. So that's, you know, I understand people in their homes and, but you've got such a big industrial section over here and, and I see that area probably going more and more in that direction. That's my comment, anyway.
Just the comment I'd like to make, I mean, I, I hear frequently, kind of out, out on the street, that the town of Indian Trail seems to be very, from a small business owner's standpoint, seems to be fairly difficult to work with to try and build, improve, kind of do things that don't fit, kind of within the box. Just kind of talking with different folks. You know, gentleman's trying to build his business, small business. You know, I sit in, in the traffic to drop my daughter and pick her up in, in the school every day. I don't live on that street. I sit in the same traffic. I would imagine that there would be some type of protocol or some type of plan, you know, that they would develop, you know, to, to avoid, you know, blocking up, you know, the school traffic and things like that. But, you know, in order to progress to the next phase, which I would imagine would incur some, you know, some cost probably on, on a lot of different levels. But I think the purpose of this evening, you know, to at least get it to that next phase, you know, I would be for it.
Any other comments? Okay, I guess at this point, we come to a motion. And, and keep in mind, it, it is right now just a recommendation on whether to approve of recommending it go to light industrial or if it stays, stays basically the same, which is residential. Is that correct? Okay, so looking for a motion either to approve a recommendation or deny a recommendation.
And we also need to include the consistency.
Okay, and a consistency finding. So, do we have a recommendation? Or a motion, rather, I'm sorry. Do you have a motion?
I'd make the motion to approve with the consistency findings. It's the infrastructure goal and number, uh, infrastructure goal number one and economic development goal as listed in the, in the packet.
I reg, I do not approve.
Well, that would be when you vote.
Yes, I know.
Do we have a second?
I see that.
We have a second, okay. All in favor, raise your hand. And then all opposed? So it's two against, a balance? Five, four in favor.
Thank you all for your thoughtful discussion. Appreciate that.
Okay, I guess we go to other business? Is that correct?
Yes, sir, I'll try to keep this brief. Did just wanna recap again on the Sea Crest Shortcut Small Area Plan. We had the second open house on May 31st. It was well-attended. It was held here at Town Hall. We had about 50 people in attendance. Folks were able to see three draft land use maps. So based on the feedback that we had from the first open house, we asked folks to provide us with their comments and feedback. You're not looking at that right now. That's just showing the existing conditions in the study area. But I, you know, staff was pleased with it. And we will be having a, we'll be having a final stakeholder meeting next week. So for those members of our stakeholder committee who've been providing us feedback throughout the process, we are asking them to, to provide us with feedback on the draft land use plan. I will show this to you. It is strictly a draft recommended, recommended land use map. So the goal next week, when we go to the stakeholder committee, is to present this to them, see what their thoughts are. And, you know, again, this, this may change. But did just want to point this out to you. Anything shown in yellow, the bright yellow represents medium-density residential. The dark green that you're seeing there, for the most part, for the most part, represents environmentally sensitive areas. The bright green does represent low-density residential. Purple is employment. And then red is commercial or retail. So this is, again, based on feedback that we've heard with the MetroQuest survey on the two open houses that we've received, this is kind of our vision. And again, this would just be one element of the plan. So this is a draft map. The dra, the map will be finalized and that will be incorporated into an overall document, which is a plan with more context and information that we would, that we will then bring back to you all and then ultimately town council. And of course, that will go to the county planning board and county commission as well.
I have a comment. It has been an absolute joy to be part of what this is going on. And it's been sort of comical, because it jumps from one thing to another to another and it changes every time we go in there. But eventually, it's gonna be a very, very solid, well-accepted plan. And I wish we could do everything this way, 'cause it's, it's been a lot of fun.
Kind of good process. Thanks, Art. Now we'll turn the reins over to Rocks.
All right, so kind of talking about other kind of strategic initiatives we're working on and, and this next one is a very important one as well. It's the update to the Unified Development Ordinance and Land Development Regulations. And so, yeah, as, as Katie kind of described with her Sea Crest study, it is very similar process with ours from the standpoint that the planning board will be asked to, to review these updates and ultimately issue a recommendation. And, you know, Ms. Towns has graciously given her time to serve on the steering committee for this and kind of report back in to the, the planning board on, you know, that, that progress. And I'll ask her to maybe just say a few words at the end if, if there's anything more to add from her perspective. But just from a, a status standpoint, yeah, just kind of recap. On March 21st, we held a, a stakeholder meeting. We were able to get together 42 stakeholders from throughout the Indian Trail Union County community, whether it's business owners, developers, realtors, citizens, HOA board members, just any, any stakeholder we thought that would have an interest in the ordinance. We wanted to get someone to, to represent those interests and, and share with us the good and, and the bad and, and what they thought about our ordinance or our processes. We also had a, on May 1st, a steering committee meeting. This is a more, a more longer-term group that's staffed with a member of the planning board. There's a member of the board of adjustment. There's, again, a design professional, a realtor, a developer, and a HOA board member. And this is sort of the sounding board for the UDO group or for the UDO update process and land development process, where they will listen to, you know, concepts or ideas for the UDO and provide some feedback. You know, hey, you're heading down the right path and, uh, you're, you're heading down the wrong path. And so, again, just to have that additional layer of vetting before it goes through any public, you know, adoption process. So on May 21st, we received our, our first draft work product from Stuart, who is the lead consultant on this project, largely just administrative chapters. You know, how, how is a rezoning processed? How does a site plan process? How, how many members are on the planning board? And so some of the things, I mean, it's, it's very, very important. From a staff standpoint, very hard to read and, and when you're reading, you know, a hundred or so pages of that and trying to think about it and their changes that they're suggesting and making sure that they are hitting the right marks. We provided them some feedback on June 11th in about 12-page document in response to... Okay, in terms of next steps, we are, into this week, we'll get our second work product from them, where we will get into more meaty chapters. I believe this, this next package will include like the use, use table, the table permitted uses. You know, what uses do we allow and what zoning districts and what approval processes do we use? And, and some other cha, and some other more kind of meaty, what I call meaty chapters, where you have, you know, standards associated with it. And we're looking forward to, to jumping into those and, and I know, you know, we're excited about that. All right, so I just want to kind of talk, kind of discuss with you some highlights from the first draft of the UDO, that first package, 'cause I think there's some, you know, we've gave them, you know, they suggested, provided some suggestions and we gave them some feedback. And we wanted to just kind of share with you some high points that the planning board may be interested. The first is that we asked them to kind of reevaluate how our, what's called our technical review committee is, is formed. And right now, the current UDO is written to, it's a very formal structured group. It's almost like a, it truly is like an approval committee for development plans and projects. And really, it's, it's not the way it functions. It functions in a more informal nature. It's more of a coordinating group between like the planning department, the engineering department, and some of our outside agencies like the fire marshal and whatnot, where we just try to, to coordinate all the feedback on a given development request and make sure that we are all sharing the same informa, we're sharing information and that we're, we're providing consistent feedback, where one group is not providing a comment that might be inconsistent with another review entity. And so we asked them to kind of, just with that lens, kind of reevaluate how the TRC is structured. We've also wanted, asked them to kind of help clarify some relationships between phasing plans and, and when we issue interim COs for, let's say, a commercial project, you know, where you let maybe a commercial business open up when, when not all the, the site improvements haven't completed, particularly for larger projects. The public, the public's shops at Handfield Village Project is an example of that, where, you know, there's still some construction activity going on while, you know, the grocery store is open. And how do you do that in a safe manner, but yet allow the commerce, you know, to function as soon as it's, you know, safely and reasonably possible? Excuse me. And so one, another element is we've asked them to make, consider combining two of our divisions or chapters, three, chapters 3 and 400. They're very similar. One deals with approval processes and the other deals with standards for permits. And, and so we just asked them to look at, hey, can these be combined into one? Because it's, they're, they just function, they, they read awkwardly as two separate chapters. Kind of getting into some items that the planning board deals with. One of the things we've, we've asked them to do is to simplify our public notification requirements for public hearings. And we have different notification requirements for different hearing types. There's still hearings, but like the board of adjustment has mailed notices out to 400 feet, I think around a special use permit site, whereas a conditional rezoning is 500 feet. And so we said, why don't we just keep it simple and come up with one standard for all mailings? And that way, we don't have to try to remember, oh, this one's this, this many hundred feet and this one's, you know, this many. And then also look at, ask them to create, examine our community meeting process and are there any efficiencies that could be created? Because we have a, we find that, you know, some community meetings are very active and get robust attendance. Others are, quite frankly, are snoozers. You know, we, you've got Katie sitting butt like that with her arms folded and crossed and sits into the night for two hours, as well as the applicant. And they may bring a traffic engineer, they may bring a civil engineer, you know, spending a lot of money to really not do much. And so we've asked them to look at other communities and how do they do their community meeting process? We still want the feedback. We want to give the community an opportunity to, to sink their teeth into a given project. But how do we do that in the most efficient and effective manner? And so we've just asked for them to do a peer review of other communities and share us what they, what they learn. You know, another piece, and this is one, you know, I know staff is real excited about, is looking at the conditional rezoning process. And we've, we've asked, and we kind of, it's actually really relevant to the, the case we just heard with the transportation business. And we've asked them to look at maybe, what we're, we're just calling affectionately a mini conditional rezoning process, where a smaller project could come before the town and maybe it's not big enough to warrant going through the full conditional rezoning process. You know, 'cause again, you might, you're looking at developing concept plans, architectural exhibits, a land survey, maybe a traffic study, maybe not. But, but you're basically spending a lot of money to develop all those, those pieces. of money to develop all those pieces, and that may make complete sense when you're developing a new shopping center or something like that, but what do you do when you have a little five-acre piece of property? That may, that may in some instances be a little, a high burden to satisfy, but if we create a little mini conditional zoning process where you could limit uses in the light industry, for example, in this case, the light industrial, and say, we think the light industrial is a great district, but, you know, if we just like to take these uses off your, off your use chart for this, for this project, or we really would feel comfortable with everything with the light industrial, but, you know, we really want to see a masonry wall against the residential properties to make sure there's no noise impacts or light impacts, or there's just good separation, so very small, specific conditions that are attached to a given zoning case, and the benefit for the applicant is that they don't have to, you know, go through that full process where they're, they may spend 50, 60, 70,000 dollars on these studies and other documents, and so it's a process that I've used in other, in other communities, and so we've asked them to look at it and create a new option, it's not going to replace the full conditional zoning process, it's going to be just one more tool that we'll have for customers.
So, question.
Please, yeah, absolutely.
So that conditional zoning process is a cost to the applicant as well as the town, or just mainly the applicant?
I mean, from a financial cost, it's a cost to the applicant.
Yeah, so, yeah, if you want to avoid that, then it's possible, right?
Well, I mean, is it reasonable? And so, you know, I mean, so again, you know, when you go through the conditional zoning process, you're front-loading, I mean, from the developer or property owner, they're front-loading a lot of money, and they have no idea if they're going to get this project approved until they, until that night, you know, and, you know, we have check-in processes set up where they can do work, do a workshop with council, and of course, they work with staff and whatnot, but really, they don't get a final decision, I mean, they don't know if their project has any wheels, has wheels, until the final, you know, council public hearing. So it's a lot of money to spend, and so, you know, if you're developing a 100-acre project, okay, that may be a cost you're willing to, a risk you're willing to absorb, if you've got a five-acre project, well, you know, is that, is that a reasonable expense to, you know, to go through, when maybe you're really only concerned about a couple things, you know, again, hey, and I'm just, you know, using this project as an example, hey, you know, light industrial makes complete sense, but it's just, I'm hung up on these two things right here, if we could just deal with these two things, you know, this would be perfect, you know, and so, I think it'd just be a good, it'd be a good, a good option to have, and that's what it is, it's about just creating another tool, another option, I think it's going to be, you know, we pitched the idea to our steering committee, and they, they were actually ecstatic about it, they were, you know, the folks working in the design community and the developers, they thought it was a great option, they recognized that, you know, a project like, you know, developing a Sun Valley Commons, the mini process wouldn't be appropriate for that, but for something small, that, whose, you know, issues might be just, you know, a couple of different things, this would be a perfect process to be able to button that down, but not put a needed burden on the property owner or the applicant, so. This would have probably some thresholds attached to it, too, I mean, you know, we'd probably put like an acre threshold, like, you know, for properties, less than five acres or less than seven acres, something like that, you know, so there would be some controls that someone couldn't use this for a big project, but again, it's just another tool, like, and I think it'd be a tool, quite frankly, for tonight's case, that could have been useful, you know, if a couple, couple reasonable conditions could be attached to it, you know, some, you know, could have been, you know, even more, you know, create some more excitement around it, so. So that's, that's the thought process behind that. And the other piece is, you know, with preliminary grading process, you know, with a lot of large, you know, residential and commercial projects, it takes time to go through the permitting process and design full construction plans, so oftentimes, it's in all communities, developers will want to sometimes get a early grading, you know, approval, so they can go ahead and start clearing the land, getting some early grades established while they're finishing up, you know, the full, the full design plans, and I'm sure Jordan can certainly elaborate further on that, and so we just, you know, we, our processes aren't very structured for those types of permits, we do manage them, but they need, they're in need of improvement, so we want to work on that and phasing elements and things like that. Another piece that we're, that this first package has, and we've asked for some changes to the draft, is coming up with an administrative amendment process, and this is simply, it's like a fancy way of saying like a staff-level variance that could be granted for a given project, where, let's say, somebody, you know, is intruding into the setback for whatever reason by a foot, and, and they have some, and they're able to meet some standard criteria to justify why that one-foot intrusion is reasonable and doesn't create any unnecessary impacts. Today, that would have to go to the Board of Adjustment and go through the variance process, well, under this, you know, maybe staff could actually issue an administrative, administrative amendment to grant that, or other flexibility standards, and again, they're meant to be minor, they're not meant to be major, you know, changes, but just occasionally, you need a little flexibility, like you mentioned, John, the, about things that don't fit perfectly in a box, you know, sometime, you know, sometimes things poke out of the box a little bit, and so this is just to help have a relief valve, if you will, for small little changes, you know, if it's something big, well then, yeah, okay, you either need to make the, make a different, you need to change your plans or go through the Board of Adjustment process for variance, but it's just, again, another tool in the tool belt to try to help property owners out and be more, you know, friendly to investment in the community. Oh, and that's, and that's it, so again, a lot of the changes that we got so far were administrative, not, you know, the most exciting, but there were a couple pieces, as I went through them, that I thought the planning board would be interested in, and has, have definitely impacts the work that you do, and so I just wanted to kind of share those at a high level, you know, if anybody, if anyone wants to see any early drafts of the UDO changes, we're happy to share it with you, but otherwise, I just want to keep you in the loop, and you'll probably, I suspect every planning board agenda will have this topic, and I'll update you on the current status. Is there any, and I'll ask Ms. Towns to add a few words if she could.
I feel that project was really, really exciting, and as I, the more, you know, in between the secret shortcut and the ordinances, and I was thinking the other day, one of the things that I see here in Indian Trail is growth, and along with growth, people will have to sort of change their minds about how things were in the past versus how things are now, and every city changes, and in order to make improvements and bring in new businesses and residences, you know, people are going to have to realize that that dirt road will be disappearing, and, I mean, we are all plagued with the traffic, true, and I wish that the DOT could get their projects done a little quicker, and I think more pressure should be put on developers to get that done, but I think that residents will have to realize that with growth, we're going to have more businesses, and things aren't always going to be the way they are now, the way they were 20 years ago, but things will start moving toward the future, and I look forward to seeing more business come into town, because I think people are quite excited when they see new business, you know, I think Publix is doing well, and other businesses that are coming in, I think some sort of wing places coming in that will be opening soon, so they were going around to the banks, et cetera, introducing themselves, so it's a sign of progress, and thank everyone who has made that possible.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions about the UDO update? Okay, great. Again, as I said, yeah, the planning board will receive, will be receiving the full draft at the recommendation stage for the text amendment, so. Great.
Okay, so we go now to the planning report, or is that the planning report?
Yeah, I think that's, yeah, I think that's, we're going to call that the planning report, I would say, just as a, just to keep you in the loop, at the next Town Council meeting, the council will be considering applicants for the boards, and it'll be for the planning board, and I believe the Board of Adjustment as well, and I know there's some folks sitting on the current board that have reapplied to continue their service for the community, and we appreciate that. I did, we did learn that Mr. Brown, Chairman Brown, has indicated he no longer wishes to continue with the planning board, he's served on the planning board for many years, and so we appreciate his service and his commitment to the community, I think previously he served also on the ABC board, and so I just, just wanted to share that with you, and once we get the appointments made, you know, at the next available meeting, we'll do, we'll ask the board to nominate a new chair and vice chair, and so just be thinking about that as well, who you think might be a good candidate, so, just wanted to share that. But other than that, I don't have anything to report beyond what Katie and I shared about ongoing projects.
Okay. Do we have a motion to pack this up in this meeting?
A motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? You in favor?
Yes.
Unanimous. Everybody have a nice evening.